Okay, so I think we have everybody, right?
We do. You go ahead and get started when you're ready.
Okay. Okay. Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. This meeting is being conducted utilizing teleconferencing and electronic means, consistent with the State of California Executive Order N dash twenty-nine dash twenty dated March seventeenth, two thousand and twenty regarding the COVID-nineteen pandemic. The live stream of this meeting may be viewed on Comcast channel fifteen and/or online as noted in the agenda. In accordance with the executive order, the public may only view the meeting on television and/or online and not in the council chambers. The Town of Los Gatos Planning Commission of Wednesday, August twelfth, two thousand and twenty, is now called to order. We are conducting tonight's meeting in a virtual setting using Zoom. All planning commissioners and staff are participating from remote locations, and all voting by the planning commission will be conducted by roll call vote. Mr. Paulson, would you please call the roll?
Yes, thank you, Chair Hanson. Let the record reflect that all planning commissioners are present with the exception of Commissioner Tavana.
Thank you very much. The next item on the agenda is normally the Pledge and Pledge of Allegiance, but I did want to note for the audience that while we normally say the Pledge of Allegiance, this practice has been temporarily suspended due to Zoom format of the meetings making it very difficult to coordinate. So then we will go on to public participation. As the Planning Commission conducts this meeting this evening on behalf of the Town Council and the residents of Los Gatos, we encourage active participation, which is essential for democracy and critical to the work of the Planning Commission. That petition may occur through, prior to a meeting, written comments about agenda items submitted to the staff are always welcome and helpful. Tonight, we do have written comments from one member of the public that were submitted with our packet, and we also have written comments in the desk item from Commissioner Barnett. Thank you very much. And then additionally, during our meeting, there are two opportunities for members of the public to participate. During verbal communications, an individual may speak on the agenda, may speak on any topic not on the agenda, and during the meeting on a specific agenda item, any member of the public may speak about that item that is on the agenda. So if you wish to address the commission tonight during verbal communications or during the consideration of an agenda item, you should join the Zoom webinar via the link and password provided on page two of the staff report. And when I raise, when I announce the item for which you wish to speak, click the raise hand feature on Zoom, and if you're participating by phone, only you can press star nine on your telephone keypad. When called to speak, you may have the option of stating your name or address or speaking anonymously for the record. However, in fairness to all who want to speak at the meeting, we do request that you limit your comments to three minutes. If you do choose to announce your name and address for the record, please note that it is, this meeting is being recorded. So we have now come to verbal communications portion of the agenda, and this is where members of the public are invited to address the commission on any item that is not on the agenda. Mr. Paulson, do we have any members of the public wishing to speak on items not on the agenda?
We have one member of the public in the attendees window, and if they would like to speak on an item not on the agenda, please use the raise hand feature. I am not seeing a raised hand.
Okay. All right, so then we will move on to the next item on the agenda, which is the Consent Calendar. And we do have one item to be acted upon with a single motion, and that is the approval of the minutes from our last meeting on July twenty-second, two thousand and twenty. Any member of the commission or public may choose to pull an item from the Consent Calendar for additional discussion later in the meeting. And I will ask the question, does any committee member or member of the public wish to pull the consent item from the calendar? I'm not seeing anyone. So then if there are, if anyone has comments or changes that they'd like to recommend, that this would be the time to do so. And if there are no changes, can I get a motion for approval of the Consent Calendar? Let's see, it looks like Commissioner Hudes had his hand up first.
Move to approve the Consent Calendar with the one item that's on it.
Okay, and then I saw Commissioner Birch's hand up.
Well, second.
A second, okay. Are any comments before I call the question? And remember, we'll be doing a roll call vote. Okay, I don't see anyone making comments, so Commissioner Badami?
Yes.
Commissioner Birch?
Yes.
Commissioner Hudes?
Yes.
Commissioner Barnett?
Yes.
Vice Chair Janoff?
Yes.
And I vote yes as well, so the motion passes unanimously. So then we will move on to the next item on the agenda, which is our public hearing, and that is Agenda Item Two, which is forwarding a recommendation to the Town Council for approval of amendments to Chapter Twenty-nine, which is zoning regulations of the town code regarding the below-market price, otherwise known as BMP program. And this applicability is townwide. The town code amendment is, application is A dash twenty dash zero zero four, and the applicant is the Town of Los Gatos. And I see Ms. Schupman is our staff person, so would you like to make a staff report?
Good evening. On January twenty-eighth of this year, the Policy Committee recommended amendments to Chapter Twenty-nine of the town code regarding BMP regulations, as well as modification to the town's BMP housing program guidelines, with the intent to increase the number of BMP units by decreasing the opportunities to pay in lieu fees, resulting in the construction of more onsite BMP units for development projects. The amendments, as recommended by the Policy Committee, also include modifications proposed by the town's administrator of the BMP housing program, Hello Housing, who manages the daily operations of the program in partnership with the town. There is also a desk evening, desk item for this evening that includes comments made by a planning commissioner. Otherwise, this completes staff's report, and we are available for any questions.
Thank you, Ms. Schupman, and it looks like Commissioner Hudes has a question for you, and if any other commissioners have questions, you can use the raise hand feature or raise your hand, and I will have you speak. So Commissioner Hudes.
So I just wanted to get a little better understanding of how this fits with affordable housing in the town. And so maybe, and I think this might be helpful, not just to me, but maybe to the public as well. So what, how does the BMP program relate to state housing requirements, RENA requirements, and if there's a state program, why do we have this? And what is it? What does it cost the town? The town has, I believe, one hundred and seventy-four units that have been produced. Just some overall framing, so we understand what this BMP is about. Thank you.
Well, I'll give that a shot, and then the Town Attorney or Ms. Schupman has any additional input. So backing up to the state, the state for our housing element cycle gives each area or region a regional housing needs allocation. From that, there is a body currently, right now, there's a Housing Methodology Committee body who is going to determine how those numbers will be split up among the jurisdictions in the Bay Area. The numbers that come from that are in numerous categories. So there are above moderate units, which is, you know, your normal market rate units. There are moderate units, which is below market rate. Then there's also low, extremely low, or sorry, low, very low, and extremely low categories. Those numbers, when they are provided to the town, they are also designated as a specific affordability level. So that is the number of units in each of those categories that the town is expected to plan for over the eight-year housing element cycle. So that's how that is generally handled. Cost-wise, our Hello Housing contracts, I believe the base is seventy thousand approximately, and then it also has additional fees that come in if they do work above and beyond what's in the contract, including the resale of BMP units. They handle that process as well. If you have any other specific questions, I'd be happy to answer those as well.
So Commissioner Hudes, you have more questions?
Just a follow-up. So we have one hundred and seventy-four units that have come about in this program. I believe some for sale and some rental. And this is a result of the town having this program and encouraging developers to develop under it. What does it cost the town in order to get affordable housing in town?
So I'm not sure I can quite follow the question. The town has had this ordinance placed, I believe, since seventy-nine. So when development that meets the thresholds, as they've evolved over the years, for whether that's a planned development or some other mechanism, once they get over a certain number of units, then they have to provide below-market price units based on our ordinance. And so a couple of other pieces of information, typically the for-sale units. So those are, I'll just give a hypothetical, if you required to do four BMP for-sale units, then two of them would become moderate, and two of them would become low pursuant to our guidelines. And then for rentals, all the rentals are based on the moderate income level. So that's how the rental price is set, and every year, the federal government provides those rental rates for, you know, Santa Clara County.
Just if I could follow up. So to get this program, basically, the town provides some administration, and there's some costs associated with that. But the bulk of what it costs, almost all of it, comes from developers. Is that, is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, do any other commissioners have questions for staff?
If I might.
Okay, go ahead. Town Attorney has a comment.
I mean, just to add a little, I think it is true that, yes, as today, almost all of it comes from the development of projects that meet the requirements to provide, you know, market-priced housing. But if you go through the history of how we got to this issue of providing for below-market price housing, a lot of that came through the redevelopment agencies and the money we got through redevelopment, because a component of all the money that we collected had to go towards affordable housing. I'm not sure how much we have in that fund right now, but it's really still left over from the redevelopment agency. And it enabled us to buy certain properties when the Dito Lane that's being, that's right now going through a BMP program. So before we actually would purchase property or do public-private partnerships, you know, with different housing advocates, that's kind of dried up because we don't have that redevelopment money. So now we do primarily rely on it, but that's how it came back, if you go way back to the redevelopment agencies.
Okay, thank you so much. And I was going to ask, it's sort of a question and a comment combined. You know, to me, since I had been involved in housing element along with a number of other commissioners, the current housing element is going from two thousand and fifteen to two thousand and twenty-three. And the issue with always, with the housing element has been that you plan for for density in certain locations in town, but it's incumbent upon developers to make a proposal to build those units. And so to me, and this is where my question comes in, it seems to me that the below-market price program is really the only way we can be assured via coding our town code that when developers come in, that we can get at least a couple of affordable units because they can offset their costs of the market price units with the below-market price units. Is that a correct statement?
So I would say that it's correct in that this program relies on private developers who propose applications to the town that propose a certain amount of housing units, where then now these regulations we can put in place, and we can ask for these below-market rate units.
So it's been, you know, it seems like it's been successful from the town's perspective.
I'll let Joel answer that, but I would think yes.
Okay, all right. So that being the case, is there anyone else that has questions of staff? Did I see Commissioner Birch with her hand up? No. Okay, all right. Well, then we will now invite comments from members of the public. And do we have any members of the public that would like to speak on this item?
So for the members of the public, we now have two, and I see Heidi Owens' hand raised, so I'm going to allow her to speak.
Okay, Ms. Owens?
Hi, my question is if we can and why we don't align the below-market program to those different categories that you spoke about from the RENA numbers. So why don't we have an extremely low-income requirement, et cetera?
Staff, you're probably the best able to comment on this from the history perspective, so.
Thank you, and thank you for the question. So it is challenging enough for us to exact moderate and low units out of developers and make that work. Where you typically see the very low, extremely low units, those are generally done in either partnerships, as the Town Attorney mentioned before, public-private partnerships, or by specifically affordable housing developers who are looking to get tax credits for their projects, and that helps fund that as well. It is very rare to see a just standard developer come in with either very low or extremely low units, unless you're talking about, you know, very extremely high-density projects, where there's a significant number of units, which wouldn't be probably viable in the town. And then again, with the either funds of a jurisdiction or the nonprofits who, that's really their businesses to create affordable housing and to be competitive for those tax credits, they generally have to get down into that very low, extremely low level to be competitive with other projects buying for those credits as well. And I'm not sure if the Town Attorney has any additional thoughts on that. Yeah, it looks like he doesn't, so.
And I will jump in and say one thing from the perspective of having sat on the Housing Element Advisory Board. I remember very clearly that when we were going through and trying to do our last, process our last RENA, that one of the difficulties we had is, I think it would have been the desire of everyone to mandate more very, very low income. But the feedback we got from the state, what I recall is that we can't put a lot of restrictions on where they fall in those buckets because the state views that as an impediment to getting more housing built. So, and Mr. Paulson, if I've got that incorrect, let me know. But I remember that was kind of a big deal because we were going through saying, you know, why can't we force the issue a little bit more? But the answer was that's an impediment to housing production, which is something the state doesn't want.
Chair Hanson, that's correct. You know, again, they're always looking for jurisdictions to remove barriers or impediments to housing production. So if we were, had a program of that nature that looked at very low or extremely low as requirements of some percentage, then that would be challenging. I would say just one more kind of historical point that I'm trying to think, and there's probably very few instances where it actually came to fruition, but the town used to have a requirement for community benefit. And so what some projects would do is, you know, even if they were only required to do a moderate unit, they might make that a low unit as an additional community benefit, or, you know, make it the price point at a level lower than what would be required by our code. So just a little additional information.
If so, so are there any other questions from the public?
So I am, I do not see any other hands raised. Give it a couple of seconds here. Seeing that, I think we're ready to move on.
Okay. All right, so thank you, Ms. Owens, for your question, and we will now close the public portion of the hearing and ask if commissioners have any additional questions of staff, wish to comment on the code amendments, or introduce a motion for consideration by the commission. So it looks like we have a few hands up. I saw Vice Chair Janoff, and I saw Commissioner Hudes.
Thank you. Just a quick clarification of process. I've got four comments. Did you want them, well, three of them are questions, one is a comment. You want them all at once, or one at a time, or how would you like to handle that?
I think it's fine to go ahead and make all your comments at one time because, you know, we want to make sure that every commissioner has a chance to talk about any questions or comments that they have, and then hopefully we move forward to a motion.
Okay, great. So just real quickly, then. As a matter of format, there's a whole bunch of lists of bulleted items or numbered items, and many of them, the penultimate item has the term "and" afterward, which to me is an all-inclusive rather than these are items on a list. So some of them are not appropriate, some of them might be appropriate. I'll just point out on page thirty-three, page, there's a disconnect between the list at the top of the page and the list that follows subsequently. There is or isn't an "and", and then I'll just refer to page forty-two, forty-three, forty-nine, fifty, and fifty-one have similar lists that may be confusing or overly restrictive. My second comment is, on page forty-seven, there's an example calculation regarding how to calculate the eighty percent or one hundred and twenty percent. We don't know what the assumed MFI is, and I think it would be clarifying for that number to be included if it's just an example. So we know how the full calculation is made. Page fifty-six, item number three says it requires the unit to remain affordable for thirty years. I wasn't sure what that restriction is. Is it a restriction on the loan or on the rent? It seems confused. There's something confusing about that restriction. And then finally, on same page, sorry, this page fifty-five, item number five, quote, tenant rents and incomes will be monitored annually. What happens if their income goes up? I mean, it doesn't really, to what end are they monitored annually? So just a question. I'm not sure if these need discussion, but just clarification, perhaps in the text.
So how do you want to handle, you know, kind of questions? And I know Commissioner Barnett had quite a number of comments that were in the same vein about, you know, making things more clear. And he actually had proposed new language. So how does staff want to handle that? Because at the end of the day, the action by the commission will be either a recommendation to forward this to Town Council. It could have changes along with it, or we could, you know, say that it's not ready for that. But usually in the past, when we've done this, we, you know, pass along all the comments of the commissioners unless somebody disagrees. So maybe staff, it could help.
Yeah, so I mean, a couple of things. One is, thank you for the comments, Vice Chair. So, you know, we'll take a look at those and or ors. I, you know, to answer your last question, you know, the guideline specifically you talk about, if you are in a rental unit and your income goes up and you no longer qualify for the BMP program, then what happens is you now have to pay full market rate rental, and then the next unit that comes up available for rent in that complex becomes a BMP for the next person, so that we always maintain the number. What I'll say is that it's not the same for for-sale. So you get into the program and you meet the requirements that are successful when being selected and then purchasing the BMP, your income can go up infinitely, and we don't obviously evict folks or make them sell the unit if their income increases for the for-sale.
Thank you for that.
Then just to jump in as a follow-up, and then Commissioner Hudes had a question. So, but when they sell the unit, I mean, it says in the code that they're going to sell the unit at a below-market price. Even if their affordability of paying their mortgage and stuff during the time they own it has changed, they still are, you know, bound to sell it as an affordable unit, and it's got to be that unit that they're in, right? Okay, all right. So Commissioner Hudes, go ahead.
Thank you. First of all, I think that the comments by Commissioner Barnett are really should be part of whatever motion that we get to, and so I'd rather than repeat them, I'm going to go to some other questions. I was kind of stumbling over the same things he was, he carefully put into his item. I did have a couple of questions that it would be good to get a response on. The first one is on page eight. In the last paragraph, where it talks about the employees working in town that would be entitled to the program. And so, you know, we have very few permanent employees these days at moderate to low income. Many people are, many employers are keeping the hours of employees below thirty-five to, you know, avoid paying for healthcare. And so I had a couple of questions about this because I think we're looking at a little bit of different workforce today. Are part-time workers who might be working more than one job, are they included? And I noticed that in the definitions, there's definition of self-employed, but I wonder in this section whether self-employed and sort of gig economy workers would be included as well? That's the first question I have.
So those are great questions. You know, most of these modifications for process and those things is really handled by Hello Housing. So what we'll do is, we will get that information, get it back to you, but we will also raise that issue as a, you know, depending on the action of the planning commission tonight. And we can figure out how they exactly define that and whether or not people who are part-time, you know, maybe in Los Gatos and San Jose and Campbell, or in multiple jurisdictions, and how is that handled, as well as the gig economy workers who may do work in town, but they do work all over the place. So that's, those are, those are good questions, and we definitely can get an answer to that from Hello Housing.
Great, thank you. I had a couple others. Should I keep going, Chair?
Go ahead, because I don't see any other commissioners that had their hands up at the moment, so.
Okay, so this one is probably the bigger thing I wanted to sort of get my head around, and that is we're raising the, we're raising the limit. So I assume that that will get more people into the pool. And so I'm a bit concerned about how do we protect the ability of the really low-income folks to participate in this program if we're pulling in a lot more folks? And so one of the, one of the ways, it seems, is the point program. And so my first question on this is, is it correct that that item C on page ten, is that the only way that we differentiate between the income of everyone who's jumping into this pool? The sixty percent gets an extra point?
I believe so, and I would just look to Jocelyn or to Ms. Schupman to confirm that.
Yes, that's the only bullet that is going to differentiate.
So I guess the question I raise, which is, you know, I think it's kind of a big question, is does that, by increasing the hundred and twenty percent of median, doesn't that cause us to have less of a preference for people who previously may have been available in the low, very low income, and decrease their chances of getting affordable housing? And my question is, you know, should we allocate more points equitably based on income? For instance, you know, six points for very low, four points for low, to allow these folks to compete with a larger number of people in the pool? So it's, I don't, it's not a technical question, it's more of sort of a policy question that I'm raising here. Does that make sense, though?
It does, and I will say to give some context, when the Policy Committee considered this in their November meeting, part of that meeting included input from the applicant for twenty Ditos Lane, who was proposing the teacher housing. And part of her conversation in that meeting was that many of these teachers were in the eighty to one hundred and twenty percent. were in the eighty to one hundred and twenty percent median family income range. And so based on our current guidelines, they go up to one hundred. Those teachers, janitorial workers, office administration wouldn't be able to meet the program. And so that was part of the conversation of raising it to one hundred and twenty. Also, that would be in line with the, with RENA numbers for the California Department of Housing.
And so I'd just offer a little bit more on that, Commissioner Higis. So, you know, the rest of the, well, I shouldn't say the rest. The predominant majority of the state, as well as how they designate the different income categories, goes up to one hundred and twenty. The town was a hundred. You know, we actually, at a hundred, you actually, you know, have a pool that is pretty limited, but, you know, on the for-sale units, you know, they also have to qualify. The reality is that if someone was in the sixty percent and this was a moderate unit, they're not going to qualify just from the income to mortgage ratio standpoint. So it's, I don't know that it's taking away from those folks' opportunities. You know, what really would be necessary is for us to have some private developers, some of the nonprofits come in and have units designated specifically for those categories. Because then what that does is that gets rid of everybody else who's above. And so it's, you know, that pool is, you know, on equal footing because that's what they're doing. You know, for instance, I think that there are, it's in raw, the town attorneys probably looked at this more recently than I, but just as an example, the fifty below-market rate units in the North Forty projects, you know, forty-nine of those are either very low or extremely low. And I can't remember if it's very low and extremely, or if it's low and very low. And I think there's one moderate unit for the manager who will be on-site. But it's really, I don't know that it necessarily, it allows more people to qualify up to the one hundred and twenty. And it really is, Ms. Shubin mentioned, kind of gets us in alignment with how the state defines those income categories.
Go ahead, Commissioner Higis.
Yeah, so I just am raising this because I think we think we're doing a good thing by opening the pool to more people. But since we have very few units that actually come up, we may be having the unintended consequence of limiting the opportunities for the lower, lowest-income people. And as you point out, the issue isn't so much, I don't think, with the purchase units, but with, you know, and the predominance is on the rental unit. So I don't know whether the, you know, what I've suggested would make sense or not. We could save that for discussion. But I just am concerned about an unintended consequence of opening the pool. I had one more sort of real quick technical point. And that's on page twenty, I'm sorry. Page eleven, the first paragraph, that sentence, or I'm sorry, yeah, that sentence, it seems it might be more straightforward to just say, if an applicant twice refuses to purchase an available unit, they will be removed from the current applicant pool? This is a little bit, the way it's worded, as especially it's been revised, is not so clear.
Okay, we can look at simplifying that language.
And that's all I had. Thank you.
Okay. If no other commissioners had questions, I had a couple of questions. Let me just check. It looks like, okay, so, so I, first of all, I wanted to say after I asked my other two questions, I wanted to get some feedback from other commissioners on the issues that Commissioner Higis raised, which is, is this the most equitable way of allocating those below-market price units? And is it being negatively affecting the lower-income people by raising the limit? So I'm hoping that some other commissioners will have some comments on that. But I had two kind of quick questions. I did note that, that whereas before we wouldn't have forced a B, and I might not be interpreting this correctly, but whereas we, in the hillsides, we might not have forced a below-market price unit. If I understand this correctly, like the next time we see one of these eight-unit development proposals in the hillsides, that they're going to be required to do at least one below-market price unit, right?
So the previous language stated that hillside projects shall only pay in LUFIs. That language was struck out. It still leaves the possibility for them to pay in Lufi if they can provide justification that a BMP unit in the development would not be viable.
Okay. Well, so that's, my next question was going to kind of go along that vein. I mean, it's like, you know, generally when we've seen these five to eight-unit developments, that we're talking about three and four million-dollar houses. So, so I'm not, I wasn't knowing the math, how the math would ever work when you have a, these three and four million-dollar houses to make it affordable, you know, for someone that's making even one hundred and twenty percent of the market income. So anyways, so I think I understand the thing behind, but so the other thing that I, that I was, I noted is that the in-Lufi's, it generally, this proposed language is going to make it more restrictive towards making a BMP versus having the option of opting out based on paying in-Lufi's. And, but I wondered if you read the code, it's fine, but if you read the document, it sort of seemed like, oh, well, if you have any problems, regardless of whether you're in the hillsides or not, that you could, you can get town council approval to do the in-Lufi's. And I just wondered if that was a good thing, if we're trying to make it tighter and get more BMPs versus having people pay into in-Lufi's? Is that, is that going to be tight enough?
I'm sorry, so were you referring to the language in the town code as not being in line with the guidelines?
Well, it, I might have read it, I might have interpreted it incorrectly, but the town code was, was pretty clear that that was only for the hillsides where they could get, they could potentially do in-Lufi's. And as I was reading the guidelines, it sounded like, more like, it was, it sounded more open to me. So, you know, maybe I misinterpreted it, but so the intent, let me ask the clarifying question, though. The intent is, the only people that can ask for in-Lufi's are going to be people that are developing in the hillsides. Is that correct?
Yeah, so I think you're, I think you're looking at the town code section, which specifically talks about HR. And then on page two and three of the guidelines, and that's the number page, not the page in the PDF, they talk about HR only or residential projects, conversion and all developments with five to nine units within, yeah, underlying of HR as well. So it looks like that's covered both on the code and the guidelines, but we'll take another look at it as well prior to getting to council, just to confirm.
Perfect. Okay. Now Commissioner Birch had her hand up.
Yeah, thank you. I have a couple of questions, if that's all right. One item had to do with the section concerning the resale of a below-market home. And my question was if, if the current homeowners did some work on the house and an addition or something that actually increased the value of the home, before that is sold, does the town do an updated assessment and then set the allowable resale value?
So I'll jump in, listen, Ms. Shubin has something to say first. But generally, what happens is, Hello Housing, there's our specific calculations that are used for upgrades, whether that's, you know, upgrading appliances, you know, upgrading finishes, things like that, adding air conditioning if there wasn't air conditioning. And then there is also a depreciation scale that they use. And so they determine what, if any, value is still left, depending on how long ago those were installed and cost of those installations. I am trying to recall, but I don't recall ever having seen an addition to a BMP. So it's typically, what we get is, you know, they replace their carpet with hardwood or they, you know, put in air conditioning when it didn't have it, things like that. But yes, there is some flexibility there and a process to handle that increase in value that would not otherwise be captured.
Chair, do you mind if I ask just a quick more?
Go ahead.
Right. On page thirty-eight, in discussion with the in-Lufi, how was six percent determined to be the correct percentage?
That I don't know. That's what it's been ever since I've been here, so twenty-plus years. But I do not know the origins, unfortunately, of that number.
I thought that might be the answer. You know, historically, does that feel appropriate?
Yeah, I think, you know, we think it's appropriate and that in combination with the fact that we are now making it extremely hard and only in the hillsides to allow in-Lufi's. You know, we really want to, you know, and that was the policy committee's complaints as well, is we really want the units produced. You know, we don't have a whole lot of large development in town in the first place to get BMPs. And so I think we have somewhere in the neighborhood of three and a half million dollars in our BMP in Lufi fund. And so the reality is, you know, if the town, and we do have documents and there, there will continue to be conversations of how to use that money. I think some of it is being used for the Ditto's Lane project. So that's generally what we use it for, and then we use it for the administration of the BMP program, which currently there is an RFP out because every five years approximately we go out and see, you know, if the current provider still is kind of the appropriate provider for those services. So we're going through that process currently as well. But it doesn't accrue much money. There's still a handful, I mean, I can think of, I think we have probably five more in the hillside PD. And then I think the in-Lufi's were also allowed for Green Ridge Terrace, which is eight lots. So other than that, unless we get subdivisions, you know, in the hillside, we're going to be asking for the units. And the only opportunity for the in-Lufi's is, is in the hillsides. And that's going to be even more limited for a number of reasons, not to mention, you know, fire and our own regulations. So, you know, we still think that that's viable. Our provider hasn't said it is, you know, low or high. So I think we're comfortable at this point, moving forward with that number. And we'll reach out to them again and see if there are any other thoughts.
So then I would wonder if there's not a way to put some language around maybe evaluation periods on that six percent? Just, we do know how property value goes around here. And ensuring that if you, you are getting this from developers, and I get that it's at a very limited scope, but just ensuring that what you get really does match the current financial conditions of the real estate market so that it can be put to good use. I'm not saying it needs to be changed, just wondering if there's a way we could put some kind of language around, you know, and an annual or, you know, every five-year reevaluation of that percentage and its applicability to the current market.
So we could do that. What I will say is that every time you want to reevaluate it, we have to do a brand-new NEXA study, which means hiring a consultant, having them go through that and provide information. So it's not something we can just change or have the staff ability to modify or do that work on our own. The other thing to offer is that depends on the development, but hillside development specifically is, you know, where the majority of those funds come from historically. And it's actually, most of those folks, they'll get the plan development, they'll get the subdivision, they sell the individual lots. Then the homeowner pays those fees because they're the one who comes forward with the house. So it's not, it's not the developer paying that upfront. Now, there's some negotiation with price with that factored in. And so they may have that conversation when they're selling those lots to potential homeowners. I'm not sure. I'm assuming there is. Because otherwise, every time someone had to pay that fee, I'm sure we hear a lot more than we currently hear regarding that issue.
I mean, just basically, so to follow up on what Commissioner Birch was asking, I mean, you said it wasn't a problem. So in your opinion, staff, this, this six percent has been enough of a deterrent that, do we typically get the people to? I mean, from what I've seen on planning commission, we typically get them to do the BMP. So, so we haven't seen that, that many people do the in-Lufi's that are not in the hillsides in like the last five years?
No, absolutely not.
Okay. So then, so at the moment, it seems like the six percent is enough of a deterrent that they're better off financially doing the BMP than they are, because they're going to make whatever decision is the least amount of money to them, right?
Well, I mean, that's, so that's, that's probably a stretch, you know, using your analysis. You know, let's just say a two-million-dollar house, you know, they're going to pay the BMP fee for that because they would have to subsidize that home if they constructed it significantly. So probably the most recent example is the homes that went up off of Knowles. The courthouse, next to the old courthouse site. So, you know, those were, you know, not small homes, they're not hillside homes by any means. But, you know, I think the, the moderate units there were like, you know, they had to sell them for four hundred and forty-eight thousand dollars somewhere in that neighborhood. So obviously, the construction, that probably barely, even in a flatland project, probably didn't even cover their construction costs. But in hillside, you know, there's a number of other factors as well. Typically, our hillside lots are, you know, larger lots, typically larger homes. If someone was going to build those in the hillside, I imagine they would come in asking for a smaller lot in a smaller home. Just because the other is, you know, you're going in and you are, you know, qualified for the below-market price program, you know, you're not going to have the extra money to have a gardener, landscaper, to take care of that big property and then utilities and other things that go into, you know, just sheerly based on the size of the home. You know, those would be, you know, burdens to our below-market price folks to try to be able to even maintain that. And most of those have common, you know, they're private roads. There could be common area, open space that would have HOA fees that would be very high. So, you know, those are all some of the challenges that we have. But I think, you know, we're going to see less and less of this and they're going to, you know, ultimately, probably have to go all the way to the council if they want to try to pay the in-Lufi even for an HR.
Okay. Just one quick question. The housing that's going up on Union Avenue across from Safeway, I know we heard about that. I'm trying to remember. I was under Housing Accountability Act, but I, because it was nine units, don't, do they have to do a BMP?
They do. So they are doing a BMP above the mixed-use building.
Okay, yeah, I thought, I thought that was the case. So then that says that part is working, that we're getting people to do the units, you know, where it's not in the hillside. So I guess we'll have to see what happens with the hillsides. But I think Commissioner Birch had a good point worth considering. I don't know if it, you know, is financially feasible for the town to keep looking at it. But, you know, since we're changing some of the dynamics, we might need to at least keep our eye on it. Now Commissioner Badami has her hand up.
Thank you. Mr. Paulson, you reminded me of the plan development that, actually, I was on the planning commission at the time for Knowles near Pollard. Can you remind me how many BMP units we got out of that plan development?
Four.
Thank you.
Okay, Commissioner Birch has her hand up again.
Sorry.
Don't be sorry.
Mr. Paulson is reminding me, though, of one of the things I wanted to ask about on page forty-one. There's actually a note about HOA fees. Let's see. There we go. It's, I didn't see.
What page is that on the document?
That is on forty-one. Um, uh, that is on forty-one. Um, where an applicant has to demonstrate the ability to pay things, um, based on exactly what you were just saying, like, I would assume people that are looking at BMPs, even if it was in a development that had an HOA, is there a way? I feel like they probably shouldn't be expected to pay an HOA fee. Does the town have the ability to dictate that or is that a developer right?
So I've probably deferred to the town attorney, but I don't think that's something that we can, um, require the developer that any BMP does not have to pay HOA fees. They're still using those facilities as well. Um, but I have not heard that that's an ability of the town unless, um, Mr. Schultz has some additional information.
Yeah, I've never seen it, but we can look into it. You know, we'll put that on the list when it goes to council. I have not seen it where that's happened. I just have all sorts of concerns, like when the roof has to be repaired, if, if, if that unit hasn't provided the funds for that fix, you're asking all the other neighbors that have chipped in their funds to pay for that neighbor's ability.
Or even if the HOA fee could be forced to the, the value of the home for that person, maybe, um, curious.
The issue for, for ownership is really to integrate them. And so if they weren't paid into the homeowner association, uh, would that mean they wouldn't be able to sit on the board, you know, so?
Yeah, you're right.
But we can look into it. I mean, it's, 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 it's an interesting concept because, you know, uh, ownership of BMPs is, is, is a trouble in any town and city because, you know, paying the HOAs, we've had a few where they've fallen tremendously behind on that and had to bail them out or find someone else, uh, to bail them out. And, and so maybe there's something we need to look at to see if there's any way that we, we can incorporate that into some of the larger development.
Yeah, thank you. And then I just have one more chair and then I'll stop for the moment.
No, it's fine.
Um, on page forty-four, item three A, I was actually just wondering if, um, Miss Shute or Mr. Paulson could explain that one to me. I'm not really, I, I understood pretty much everything within the point system. That one, I, I wasn't following along. So it's like, for people that have lived in the town but then moved out?
So that, that's been in our guidelines for quite a while, um, ten years and moved out of town. Change of application. Yes, I think.
So that's usually, that's maybe someone who had lived here more than ten years and then they have maybe been gone just for a year or two. You don't have to be gone ten years, but at least within the last ten years, you, you've moved out maybe because you couldn't find rent in this area and now you wanna move back in.
Oh, okay.
But you couldn't go more than ten. So if you lived here for eleven years and then were gone for eleven years, you don't get the two points. But if you've been here eleven years and you've been gone less than that ten years, then you get the two points.
And it's really, I think, displacement, right? So if someone gets priced out of the market, has to move to an adjacent jurisdiction because they can get rent affordably. If a BMP unit comes up back in town where they've lived for quite some time, you don't wanna be able to provide them that opportunity. And I think that's probably why, um, those points are in the guidelines.
Oh, thanks. That makes more sense. Thank you.
Did you have any more questions at the moment?
Um, I can't promise.
It's, it's fine because, you know, you, we, we should answer all of your questions. Um, okay, so, um, do any other commissioners have questions at the moment or? Um, I, I still did wanna hear from, oh, it looks like Commissioner Barnett. I, I'm hoping to hear from some of the other commissioners about, um, the points that Commissioner Hudes brought up. Um, and so let me go to Commissioner Barnett for whatever comments he has.
To that point, uh, I was wondering if staff could help out with some notion of how many of the BMP applicants for purchase or, or rental are at, uh, certain income levels that we can already define?
So a couple of things. One is rentals, you have to be eighty, currently you have to be eighty percent or below, um, the median income for Santa Clara County. Um, and so kind of getting back to Commissioner Hudes's point is, yes, this is, this does expand that pool, but as the shootman mentioned, you know, this was in direct response to an issue that comes up quite often, um, with this, in this instance, the teacher housing that was being done at Digo's Lane. For the for sale units, you have to fall into one of those categories. And right now it's moderate or low is typically what we see. Um, if you have more than one unit, then the units get split, um, between those two categories and then you have to be in that income bracket. So a hundred percent of people qualify for each of the income levels. Then apply for that.
Okay, so did that answer your question, Commissioner Barnett?
Yes, it does.
Okay, so, um, so just to kind of do a little set on where we are right now, because we've had lots of good questions and comments so far. So, so our objective, um, for this hearing is that we're supposed to make a recommendation to town council. And, um, and, and in doing so, if, if we're recommending that they move forward with this, it can be with comments. Um, we, we do need to make the, um, the findings that are spelled out in the staff reported on SEQA and complaints with the general plan. So, um, so, so that being the case, um, you know, that, that we can take a number of directions. And, and when we've done these studies since in the past, we usually forwarded along, i- even if it's positive, there will usually be, it's positive, but please consider all these things that we brought up. So, um, so, but we could also say it's not ready and it needs to go back to the policy committee. You know, and that, that, that's the most negative scenario. But, um, so I wanted to kind of put that out there in terms of like moving thing, the discussion forward. And Commissioner Hudes has his hand up, so go ahead.
So, um, I'm, I'm prepared to summarize in, into a motion if, uh, we're at that point. Or if, uh, there are other important points that folks would like to raise, I will just, uh, wait a bit.
I, I think it's a, well, um, Commissioner Janoff, Janoff has her hand up, so I'm gonna take her comments, but, um, but I would say that it would be a good idea to try and get a motion out there to kind of, um, see where the commission is, um, to see, you know, if we need to modify things or. Um, so Commissioner, uh, Vice Chair Janoff.
Yeah, thank you. I, I just wanted to say that I thought Commissioner Hudes's concerns about the, the increase on the upper range are, is an interesting question. Uh, and it's, we really don't know the answer because it's untested and I'm wondering whether it's possible to, um, have a revisit with a, with a small report of some sort that can, you know, if we, if we decided to go forward in supporting the, the larger range, could we ask for a report in an, in an appropriate period of time that says, uh, this is, this has boxed a lot of people out or it's provided no opportunities for people to get in, just so we know whether, you know, this has been a, a constructive change or, or a not constructive change. Uh, so I, I think that it's, it's an interesting point and we just don't know how to, we don't know how to test it now. We won't know until we have some data. Um, and then generally speaking, I think, uh, the comments that have been raised tonight have been very constructive and, and, uh, clear. I, uh, would support, um, forwarding this to the, uh, town with those comments to be considered.
Thank you very much for your comments. Um, so Commissioner Hudes, if you wanted to make a motion, that would be great.
Yeah, I, actually, I wanted to start with one more comment, um, and then I'll include it in the motion, but I wanted to get it on the table first, is that, uh, I don't think we have enough affordable housing. I think the program is, uh, very important and I think we're gonna be pushed with a lot of numbers, to, uh, reach. And I think it's going to be important that we create affordable housing opportunities. So I was going to suggest that, that, you know, over, th- these numbers of how many units a developer has to build were developed a long time ago. The profit on development in town has gone up. We know that. Uh, and so I would add, um, a question of whether it might be appropriate to, uh, look at raising the number, um, that needs to be created, uh, the amount of housing, uh, by perhaps ten percent. So whatever formulas that we're using, uh, today, uh, for instance, you know, five to nineteen, uh, requires ten percent, perhaps it should be eleven percent, uh, so that we actually end up getting, uh, more housing. Now, that, it's pretty controversial and big thing, so I'm gonna hold off on the motion if, in case folks would like to comment on that. But it seems to me that while, you know, everything has gone up, yes, costs have gone up, prices have gone up, the profits have gone up as well. And so, uh, perhaps there's an opportunity to take a look, maybe even surveying what other municipalities are doing, uh, to see if we can get more affordable housing created.
So through the chair, um, Commissioner Hudes, so I think that's a, a, a great idea and recommendation. I think, you know, um, basically recommending that the, you know, percentages for the various categories be reviewed, um, and potentially increased, uh, we would have to perform a NEXA study to, to do that. I know a number of other jurisdictions in Santa Clara County have done that recently. The town did not participate in that, um, action. That was over the last few years. Um, but we might be able to use some of that base information if it's not stale to go out, do an RFP or RFQ or NEXA study, uh, for the potential to increase our BMP requirements, uh, to hopefully get more units.
Okay, and, uh, Vice Chair Janoff has a comment and I do as well, so go ahead.
Yeah, just in light of those comments, uh, Director Paulson, do you know the outcome? Do, do you know whether those numbers have been increased or decreased? I mean, I, I'm, I'm sensitive to the, to your previous comments that we are wanting to not disincentivize the building of affordable housing. So, um, do you, do you have any idea or any, uh, uh, information about what changed or didn't change with the municipalities who conducted those studies?
I don't, but we can look at it. I know that there are some jurisdictions that have higher minimum requirements, you know, fifteen or, or maybe a few of them have twenty, uh, percent. Kind of that's just across the board. Ours doesn't start at twenty percent until I think you get over a hundred. So, um, but we can take a look at a couple of those studies, um, before it goes to council and, and move forward, um, that information with that question from Commissioner Hudes.
Okay, and, and so I, I had the, um, I had the same thought. I, I like, um, Commissioner Hudes's suggestion. Uh, but from a big picture perspective, I, I'm thinking that, um, we ought to try and get this thing, it, it's going to be improved by the language, um, changes that have already been proposed without the additional recommendations of the planning commission. Um, so I, I think we can add on to that, but, um, the one thing we have to balance it with is the research in the market that, you know, we're not going to deter any production of affordable housing by pushing, squeezing the developers more. But at the same time, if, if the market supports it, we should try and do that. So maybe there's some, I, I don't know what, at what point this is going to council, but, um, you know, if that's possible to do that before that, I, I think it's worth looking at, but I don't want to stand in it. My, my personal feeling is I don't want to stand in the way of getting the code somewhat tighter, even if there's to-dos that go along with it. So Commissioner Hudes had a comment.
Uh, I'm prepared to make a motion to incorporate that idea. That's okay.
Okay, go ahead.
So I, I, I moved that we forward a recommendation, uh, to the town council to approve, uh, the changes, uh, as provided by staff with the additions of the comments of the planning commission. And I want to highlight, uh, several changes that I think, uh, need to be pretty explicit. The comments from Commissioner Barnett, um, as written, uh, Commissioner Birch's comments about, um, valuation and particularly resale considerations. The, uh, consideration of, um, the, oh, Director Paulson's, um, uh, commitment to take a look and, and do some research on part-time and gig workers. Um, can you hear me okay?
Yes.
Okay, uh, the, uh, specifically the consideration of looking at additional points um, for different income levels in the formulation. And again, this is not explicit to change it, but to look specifically at, uh, five points for sixty percent and three points for eighty percent as something for the consultants, um, to look at to try to balance, um, this and give, uh, a better opportunity for, uh, low-income residents to participate. Uh, consider increasing um, the number of units by, uh, by, uh, looking, by doing a survey of other communities to see whether it would be possible to raise the requirements by ten percent, um, across, across the board. So those are the ones that I captured that I highlighted. There might be others, but maybe somebody would like to add them to the motion, but that's a motion as I have it.
Okay, and are you able to make the findings, um, that are spelled out in the staff report?
Yes, I would include those findings.
Okay, um, and are there, um, so, uh, let's see if there are any commissioners that would want to second the motion. And then we could always, um, ask for modifications before we vote. Uh, Commissioner Badami?
I would second the motion based upon the additions, um, made by Commissioner Hudes.
Okay, um, so we have a motion and a second. Um, so, um, before we take a vote, though, we should, this might be a good time to take any additional comments. Uh, if there's, um, commissioners that thought, um, there's anything in addition to what Commissioner Hudes had to say, or if you had any, um, additional comments that you haven't already made about, um, this motion in general, um, this would be a good time to do it before we take a vote. So I wanted to see if any other commissioners, um, but everyone had contributed suggestions, so I think we're, okay, I don't see any hands raised. Okay, so that being the case, we have a motion and a second. Oh, did I miss any? Okay, right. So then we'll do a roll call vote, um, and I will start with Commissioner Badami.
Yes.
And then Commissioner Birch?
Yes.
Okay, Commissioner Hudes?
Yes.
Commissioner Barnett?
Yes.
Vice Chair Janoff? And then I vote yes as well. So the motion passes unanimously and, um, and Mr. Paulson, are there any appeal rights for this decision?
There are not appeal rights as this is a recommendation.
Okay, thank you very much. Um, and thank you, um, for, to everyone in the commission for all your comments because I think they were really helpful. And I think, um, you know, will help shape this into, um, you know, a better solution for our town. So, um, that being the case, that was our main item on the agenda. And so then we move on to other business. And, um, the first item would be report from the Director of Community Development, Mr. Paulson.
Thank you, Chair Hanson. So only one item, um, at the last council meeting, um, the town council adopted the vehicle sales ordinance modifications that were reviewed by the, the planning commission previously.
Okay, thank you very much. Um, and then the next item would be subcommittee reports. In addition to the, their service on the planning commission, members of the commission serve on several town committees. Um, these include the conceptual development advisory committee, the general plan advisory committee, and historic preservation committee. Um, so, um, I, I do happen to know the conceptual development advisory committee met today, so I was hoping that, um, that our vice chair, um, Commissioner Barnett would, um, give a quick report.
Yes, the, uh, committee actually did meet today, this afternoon, to discuss the relocation of the Yuki residence, which is located at fourteen nine one nine, Los Gatos Boulevard, uh, to be moved from phase two to phase one. Um, questions and comments were made by the committee members and the committee concluded that it favored the application with the proposed comments.
Very good.
I should say the proposed concept was approved unanimously.
Yes, thank you very much. Okay, and, um, Commissioner Hudes has the historic preservation committee met recently? Yeah, yeah. And then, um, I will, I will talk about the general plan advisory committee. Um, since our last planning commission meeting, we had too many. Yeah. And then I will, I will talk about the general plan advisory committee. Since our last planning commission meeting, we had two meetings. One was a very interesting with very large public participation meeting where we discussed the, the impact of the pandemic of environmental justice, which is not sustainability. It's more about social justice relative to the environment. And then also the general topic of racial inequity and social justice and how we might incorporate that in the general plan. And we had many, many, many public, public comments and which were much participated, appreciated. And some of them are really heartbreaking. Some of their stories is about, about racial slurs that had made to, by town residents and by fellow students in the high school and so on and so forth. So it, there's still a, then there will be a follow-up, but the outcome of the discussion was that the committee felt pretty strongly that we're, we need to create a new section in the general plan that, that speaks to racial equity and social justice. So I don't know what form that'll take at this point, but that was one of the recommendations that came out of that. And then we also talked about the mobility element. No, I'm sorry, the hazards and safety element. And that was last week. And, and, and then we're going to be talking about the mobility element. And then at our next meeting, we have to determine when that is. So things are moving along, but, but the general plan advisory committee has been very, very busy. So that being the case, that is all the subcommittee reports. And I will move on to commission matters and ask if any commissioners have matters they would like to bring up. Okay. Seeing none, I will say thank you all for participating in this meeting and this meeting is adjourned.